Yep.
All right.
Call me the order. We say attention before the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting. Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to those? Seeing here none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close any sign. Motion carries. Bills with additional bills sitting on the desk. Law enforcement center billing as well as some additional cost to the purpose. Motion approved. Okay, motion in a second to approve paying the bills. Questions or further discussion?
There's one on a higher list to deal with there.
Okay. We're good. One note on the law enforcement center, I think you should make that public. Who cares? Yeah. That part of the jail bill fifty two five. Is that simply, is that a one month thing or is it something that's been going on for a long time?
No, that was, that was over the, since COVID started.
Was this for state prisoners that were sitting there because they weren't bringing them into the system, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I remember. That's good. That helps, incredible thing. Okay. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything outstanding and I think everything looks pretty good.
No, everything is pretty good.
Boo boo boo. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve financial reports. Further discussion? All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close any sign. Oh, okay, roll call this time. I would forget, because one place we do it, one place we do it. I'm sorry to be, no, you're fine, that's good. I was the one who did that myself.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye. Motion carries. Approval agenda, anything to add or amend? Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close any sign. Motion carries, agenda is approved. Okay. Good morning Sarah, you're up first.
Good morning. So I just have a couple of things with Ramsey County Extension. In the 4H world, we were pretty disappointed we weren't able to do a face-to-face little project day. Usually we do one in the fall and so we kind of put our heads together and we're doing a virtual mystery project. And we thought maybe we'll get about, you know, twenty kids to sign up and it'll be all good. We're up to seventy-seven kids. So we are busy in our office trying to get baby kits ready for the kids and so they'll complete the kits at home and then we've been recording videos that we're going to send home with them as well. With voiceover on how to actually do the project. So we're utilizing a lot of the equipment that we've been getting through the CARESAC dollars through NDSU, which has been great. So 4H, we're, you know, we're, a lot of, a lot of our clubs are doing virtual meetings over Zoom. Maybe we'll have a small group meeting in person and then sometimes we'll zoom in if they're quarantined or whatever, but we're making it work. So that's a good thing with 4H. We also decided, the last few years, we've had a very successful outdoor winter arrangement workshop. We decided to, we come in hot about that as well, we're doing that one virtual as well. Great interest in that, we've got thirty people signed up, we've got enough kits for fifty. So, and that's, we just put that out Friday, last Friday. So that is actually all successful. So we're going to kind of do the same thing, people will pick up kit and we'll do a video on how we would complete the project and then people can zoom in and ask questions on a later date. And then finally, I hope Bill was here last time and was very sad to went up, so we had a, we decided not to have our extension roundup. So after a lot of discussion, we are actually excited to say we are having roundup only virtually. So we are, our agents have been really busy getting some really interesting and speakers. I guess when you go virtual, you know, you don't have to pay for travel. So we're getting, they're getting some really amazing speakers and obviously a lot of our local speakers here as well as from our specialists from NDSU. So we'll be looking for more information on extension roundup. Unfortunately, there won't be any good food to go with it, but that will, that will still be happening and they're still, they're finding a way to, so those that can still, that have needed to get their continuing education credits, they'll still be able to get those as well. So Bill said they'll have more information and an agenda for roundup next month. So it'll, it'll still happen right around that, the first weekend of January, we'll have some taped speakers and then we'll have one day of a live roundup, virtually. So that's what's going on in the extension world. Do you have any questions for us?
Questions? Okay. Thank you Sarah, fantastic. Okay, we're going to talk about beer liquor license with Carla Grossman. We're up. We got documentation in our packets with the applications, I believe. Carrie is floating head and back there on the television screen. Hi Carrie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh yeah, clear, nice and clear.
Good.
Can you hear us? Maybe not.
I can hear you.
Okay, okay, very good. I know in the past we had looked at lease documentation for this liquor license. Is that something we're looking at again or?
I believe Ms. Grossman provided lease documentation that should be in the packets.
Does everything look in order Carrie?
I didn't see anything left on the application that needed to be filled out. So it would just be up to the commission at this point.
Is that it there? Got a whole pile of stuff? Oh, very good, that lease you get right there. Okay. Doesn't matter. Very good. I guess anything you would like to mention or anything the commission would like to state about both the comments? Or a motion to approve?
I guess I had talked to Carrie and said that everything was in line and so I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the beer and liquor license.
Okay. Roll call Carrie. We have a motion in a second to approve beer and liquor license for Wally's Roadhouse. Well, Wally's not a restaurant. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close any sign. Motion carries. There you go. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you Ms. Grossman.
Uh, Kevin, you are up third.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, start off with the update on Calveron Ramsey County eight by David Lorenz. We did get that installed on Tuesday, so that project is done. Of course we'll have to put asphalt back in there, we grow it for the winter. Turned out pretty good. And also along with that, we did get the bill for that, for True North Steel. Originally it was going to be made in here and so there was like a little over $2,000 worth of freight. But they did make it Fargo, so we saved that $2,000 in freight. So the total bill for True North Steel this month, well, we had some flat paid seller stuff too, but the total is sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. I guess I'd like a motion to pay for that.
Motion approved.
Six to one, six to one Plato. We've got a motion in a second to approve the billing, the payment of True North, True North Steel, excuse me, sixteen thousand seven twenty-one seventy-four, permits and miscellaneous. Further discussion on the motion to pay? Seeing none, roll call please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, next the load pass, after all the discussion and motions we've had, they made a motion to go ahead and change their software, permitting software, so now they will be able to sell wintertime permits for fifty dollars for the whole three months. It'll just be an option which county you're in to pick on the software.
Look at that.
They had a board meeting and came up at the board meetings and they made a motion to go ahead and do it, so.
Do you have some new technology float in or what?
I think they just heard his complaint that we're looking for and they made a request, which is good.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
So we don't need action, at least the heads up after all the talk we've had. And also John Deere is asking if we need to want to rent tractors again next summer. And I guess they're getting ready to order them, so we get them in time. And Northern Association Counties has set up the contracts, so it's exactly the same as it was last year. So I guess I'd look for a motion to rent two tractors next summer, again for lawn ditches.
One question, they didn't put this up again?
They did, uh, Naco did. We didn't, but Naco did it for the whole state, they did. And so they don't necessarily touch the locals, but they touch the headquarters.
So we're covered.
Yeah, we're covered, I mean, yeah. And honestly, when I do talk to the guys around town here, Case and Butler doesn't say, they have tractors out there, they can't even compete at this price.
I'll make, make the number.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second to approve renting tractors from John Deere again next year. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close any sign. Motion carries.
Go ahead.
Oh, you're going to be over here. Very good, any questions for Kevin? Okay, thanks Kevin, appreciate it. Okay, down to unfinished business, COVID-19 discussion. Two different things, well more than two things, but two different areas to talk about in this. From an operational standpoint, we've had a lot of different, I wouldn't say issues, but ongoing things where we have somebody having to quarantine because of a close contact and positive or are isolated because of a positive or things of that nature. So we have had some continuity issues when it comes to operations. Overall, I think everyone's handling it pretty well, but just so you know, those are issues that are ongoing. I, it's not, it's not, here I'm looking for it. Specific to us, it's happening in all, all realms of every place around the community. And the guidelines are, are if you are a close contact, you have to quarantine fourteen days from that close contact. Because there's that, that's the latency period possibly for the virus to spread. So, and then if you're positive, you have to isolate ten days from symptoms beginning because that's when your viral load is high enough to transfer that, that virus. So it's, it turns into, you know, quite a long time if you have close contacts quarantining. So actually, one of my friends on Facebook in Grand Forks, she and her family are on their fourth time quarantining already. So think about that, that's two months of their life they've had to quarantine because of close contacts. So, and I don't know if any of you have gotten sick, but, but not a good situation. But it's, it's what we have to do to try to slow it down because the thing is really, really frightening. It's just something we're going to have to continue to deal with as a county. Excuse me, visiting with Crystal and Chris the other day, one thing we wanted to reiterate, and it's something that's been standing as a county policy since this began, is that telecommuting for our departments is obviously still an option. We've got all the VPN setup, you know, try to attempt to get people out of the building or at least we can split if we can, our workload, our staffing, so we can get people out of the building. Because if we get people out of the building in their home, we will have less chances of people having close contact type things and less chances we're going to have to quarantine and things of that nature. So just to reiterate to all our department heads, excuse me, they're going to push it out in an email and having, I think we're going to have a department head meeting following this tomorrow or day after, something like that. Day after would be Saturday, but following this meeting to discuss that, to just reiterate that if any departments would like to, you know, avail themselves of that telecommuting, just to remember that that's still an option for those that can't go home and work, so we can get people out of the building. Social services has been dealing with a ton of quarantines and isolations as well. So it's kind of just the, the mark of the times and it's just something we're going to have to deal with as we go forward. And operationally, we're going to have to expect some pickups here and there. But overall, I think everything's been getting done fairly well. It's just, you know, we have to deal with it. I don't know if it falls under COVID-19 discussion, but since I'm thinking about it, just a big thank you to everyone that helped staff the polls on Tuesday and Candy and Nathan and the first staff, Jackie. I heard nothing but good things about how it went smoothly. We took in what, about four thousand votes previous to election day?
Four thousand eighty?
Four thousand eighty or fifty-three something. So those extended hours, we caught probably three hundred people or plus in that range that came and voted early with those extended hours and additions to mail-in ballots. And everything went really smoothly. The setup down there was really good and it was impressive. So a big thank you to Andy and everybody else that she directed in getting that election to run smoothly. As usual, or at least as long as I've been around and have watched, we're always one of the first places that reports. And we report accurately every year and we report quickly and that means the job is being done well, so a big thank you. From there, I would turn our attention to, just for reference information purposes, I, I'm not saying this is something we're going to do or not going to do, but I wanted to have the discussion at the commission level and allow for all of the information that I have derived from individuals to sit in front of everybody so we can have the discussion. I'm sure everybody knows that the city of Devils Lake on the twenty-seventh, I don't remember, last Monday, enacted a mask mandate for inside city limits in Devils Lake. It passed unanimously at the Devils Lake City Commission meeting. And that was following a meeting that the college put together on the twenty-third of October. I was a portion of that meeting as well as Jeff was able to attend in person, I did it virtually. And we had a decent, not a lot of people there obviously because of the situation, but the response was we should put together some type of a plan for the community that we can actively talk to people about what will mitigate this, so we don't get to that critical level. Because once we get to the critical level, the decision-making no longer is going to be in our hands. It will be in the governor's hands and, and we're going to be looking at closures and things like that. We don't want that obviously, we want our schools to stay open, we want our businesses to stay open. We were moved from the yellow level to the orange level, which is high right below the critical level. So since that meeting, the city of Devils Lake had the discussion, enacted a mask mandate for the city of Devils Lake without penalties. That we have what's called a, I can't remember the term perfectly, but a community COVID committee that has a cross-section of healthcare professionals, leadership from the park board, the school board, the county commission, the city commission, the college, local business owners, as well as chamber executive tourism, I think is kind of loosely in there as well. To just keep the information flowing between the different entities about what's going on, what they're doing, coming up with a plan on how can we talk to people about, you know, the importance of making sure we tamp this thing down so we don't get to that next level, so we can continue to make our decisions locally, basically is what it comes down to. And we can keep our schools open, we can keep our businesses open. They've come up with some really good ideas, there's PSAs out there talking about, you know, social distancing, things of that nature. We've all heard that a thousand times, you know, don't go where you don't need to go, do business you need to do, keep your social circles small, wash hands, sanitize and wear a mask. I mean, that's, it's been pretty much beaten into us since March that that's kind of what we need to do. There's also, they're going to do some interesting things with, they're doing a button. So people that can't wear masks because of PTSD issues or maybe other medical issues can wear a button that says, I can't wear a mask, so nobody will give them, you know, will hassle them when they're out and about, which is, I think, a fantastic idea. So people with medical issues won't not have to be questioned constantly, why aren't you wearing a mask? If people are getting nosy essentially. And then they're also going to do positive reinforcement of the possibility of mask wearing by different organizations within the community have donated money. And then they put together packs with five dollar chamber bucks that could be spent anywhere in Devils Lake. And if you see somebody doing a positive thing to help, whether it's social distancing, masking, washing hands, whatever it might be, those different businesses are going to be able to hand those out as kind of a thank you for helping keep the community open. So I think that's kind of a neat way to approach it, it's not, it's contributive, it's positive. So I think that's a good thing. A lot of good ideas have been coming out of this committee, I, none for me. I've just been sitting there listening and I think it's, it's a positive thing to rally as a community around something and to try to take this into our own hands instead of taking it out of our hands, basically. So up to this point, it's been positive, we're meeting once weekly basically at this point. And I think anybody that wants to be on the calls can be on the call, but I was asked, Jeff was asked, but anybody else if they'd like to, I'm sure can watch, because it's just kind of an open concept of what can we do as a community to make sure we don't get to that red level and those decisions aren't ours anymore. So free flowing conversation wise, we have received a couple of different requests from Lake Region District Health Unit formally asked that we should put an executive, a mask mandate on for the countywide. As well as Lake Region State College following the meeting sent a letter saying that they would like to see us look at it, possibly look at a mask mandate for countywide. I never received the letter from the healthcare providers, but I'm assuming it still stands. They, they asked the community as a whole, not specifically a commission, but they did give it to the commission, the city commission. All the healthcare providers in Devils Lake, the primary care providers, signed the letter asking for a mask mandate, all twenty-five of them. So I'm not saying that we do or don't do, I'm just bringing the information to everybody so we can at least have the discussion. I asked Carrie to look into it for us, see what we could and what we could not do, if we chose to do anything or nothing. And there is a draft mandate in front of you coming from Carrie, as she put it together. Also, the city of Devils Lake's language is in front of you. The draft mask mandate, I would assume Carrie, it looked very similar to the one I saw from Steel County, correct?
Yeah, it, it's a standard template that everyone's using and then tweaking to their individual needs if they choose to do a resolution or a policy mandate.
Um, so I can't keep track of all the cities and counties up to this point, but all of the larger cities in the state, Fargo, Minot, Grand Forks, Devils Lake, Rugby, West Fargo, most places now have some type of a mandate, most of them without any kind of enforcement policy mechanism, but just to show that we think it's important. County wise, I know Steel County has now put a mandate on, I believe there's a couple others now too that have enacted. I, I don't know the other counties, but I know there's, I heard a couple more, I believe, so we'll hold on that. But so we wouldn't be the first if we were going to take this step. But I wanted to bring the information forward to everybody so we can at least have the discussion on where we would like to go with something like this or who would not like to follow it. So I'm open to, I don't think I haven't had to talk long enough, so anybody else that they'd like to say, please chip in.
I think that committee is a, is really a positive force within our community. They have a lot of great ideas stemming from it, a lot of brilliant minds on it and I think it's and like Adam said, the reason being is we want to try to curb the numbers down, downward, we've been on a steady downward for quite a while, especially this last month, it really hit its heart. Yesterday, we had twenty-eight positive cases in Ramsey County with a positivity rate of thirty-two percent. So, you know, all the mitigation efforts need really a community support, community buy-in to it to try to help keep businesses open, keep schools in session, kids that need to learn in, in class. And in order to do that, we need to keep not only the kids healthy, but the people that are teaching them healthy and the support staffs around, you know. Healthcare facilities, same, same thing. You know, making sure that the people that were working in those healthcare facilities involved in the community and not catch a virus and then bring back to that facility and create an operate with the vulnerable population that's, that's in those healthcare facilities. I do, did notice that the city of Rockford issued a mask mandate.
Yes, that's something as well.
And I think they're going to be popping up all over. You know, like Adam said, the standard template that was being used, if you go back to the back page, that B, letter B enforcement of these regulations shall focus on educating the public on danger to be spread and promoting best public health practices to achieve the goal of these regulations. Many meetings critical to nineteen. So there's not a penalty or a fine or anything like that. And I think the committee coming up with that idea of, of being able to identify somebody readily that is unable to wear a mask due to some medical condition, I think is a great idea. And, you know, they don't want to be isolated and confrontational and different things like that. Yeah, this is, this virus has caused a lot of stress amongst people there. But until there is a active working immune system.
Vaccine?
Vaccine.
Antibodies.
Antibodies. We need to do what we can to help slow the curve of this thing, so we can keep our businesses, our community up and running and our kids in school, so.
Yeah, I'll make mention too, you, you touched on the positivity rates. I looked at our numbers from yesterday as well. We're at the highest active positive we've ever had in the county, at a hundred and twenty-eight positives right now. Our fourteen day rolling average right now is nine point three percent. If I could read it, it's kind of small, but it looked like it was nine point three, which is the highest we've ever had. I believe, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, but CDC guidance right now is if you're at a five percent rolling average, you're supposed to be shutting down. So we're double that and we're not slowing down, it's been slowly elevated. Speaking from experience at this point, I don't know who knows, I was positive and it was no fun. I'm young, I'm relatively healthy and you don't want to get it. It's, I'm twenty days out and I still don't feel seventy-five percent healthy. So it's, it's not a lot of fun, we need to slow it down. And, and the only way we're going to slow it down is by taking the steps, even if you don't want to wear a mask, which is, I understand the political nature of mask wearing at this point, but just the common sense approaches of social distance when you can, keep your circle small, wash hands, go to places you don't have to at this point. And if we do that for at least a couple or three weeks or a month, it's going to start to drag it down. It's just going to take some time. And that's what we're going to have to shoot for. Anybody else on this?
I think there's a lot of unknown skill within this virus, you know, a lot of those new things that, any other research and, and suggestions on how to combat it and things, you know, have changed from the time that it first was discovered? But I think the biggest, greatest unknown is how it's going to affect each individual. Because it seems to be affecting people differently. Some people get it that they don't have any outward symptoms, they don't get sick, they're asymptomatic, but they can still spread the virus. So that's a, a big community spreader right there. You have, you don't know that you're, you have tested positive, there's those that You have, uh, you don't know that you're, have tested positive, there's those that, uh, and get it and they don't, they don't have nothing more than mild symptoms. And then there's those that, that get severely ill, need hospitalization. And unfortunately, there's, there's, there's rules that not recover, that's where it's in this one. We need to do what we can to protect our community, protect the health of our residents and, uh, and, you know, keep businesses and schools continuing to be viable.
I got one question for Carrie. I listened to the radio the other night on, on KFR at Bismarck. And the last city commission meeting that Bismarck had, the, the big argument was over the mandate, whether to use the word mandate. If you're gonna use the word mandate, then you have to have a penalty behind it. Is that correct?
I think it's just a perspective on words, Ed. Some people are calling it a mandate, some people are calling it a resolution, some people are calling it a policy approach. But there is no, um, enforcement penalty that the county would be able to put into whatever it was called.
They had some commissioners on this radio show that night and they said the meeting lasted between five and a half and six hours on this issue.
Oh, wow.
I was just shocked. I mean, I don't have no problem with mandate or resolution, but should we call it? What would you suggest?
A policy resolution. That's one way to look at it. Um, a mandate, a mandate might imply to some people, uh, that there is an enforcement mechanism. So perhaps resolution or policy recommendation would be better.
I think we should do that.
I think we can call it a, uh, resolution of support for mitigating.
Yeah, something like that's fine. I, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, mandate doesn't imply that there's some type of a penalty.
They really had, I mean, it went on and on and on from what I understood.
Yeah.
You can act about it forever. At the price you gotta have a penalty on the mandate.
Well, I, I've been sitting on, I guess I can mention that too, uh, the governor's been having a weekly meeting with the mayors of the fourteen larger cities, the county commissioners of those counties that the cities sit in. And it's been quite interesting learning what's going on in each different community and how each community is handling it. The, the, the only, I wouldn't say hesitance, but Mayor Mahoney from Fargo said, you know, they've had a mask requirement since June, I believe, is when they put their, quite, is what they called it, a requirement. And he said, and it's anecdotal, he said, you know, we're not doing polls or anything. But he said, "I went into different businesses and a week or two before the ma- the mandate that they put on in October, he said there was maybe five or ten percent compliance in some of these businesses." He said, "Following when we called it a mandate, ninety-plus percent compliance." Because then people get it in their head that this is important and that it's a mitigating strategy and, and it works, is the thought process behind it. And I'm not saying that's good, bad, or different, but it, it was an interesting thing to hear that from that, from the mayor there. There was, I, I, I can, I think those are all public, open meetings, so I'm not speaking out of turn. There is a lot, there was quite a bit of frustration on the call this last week um, from different, uh, local leaders about the fact that we don't have a statewide strategy and we're gonna have a bunch of different policies in every little community, county, and city, and it's not all gonna line up.
Well, yeah, I, I know the argument. I have no, I know the argument too. You know, you understand, but I, I think of each community kind of has its own deal, but we want people to stay healthy.
Oh, yeah.
Don't move around too much, you know.
Well, and, and the thing is, I understand where the, the governor's coming from, to a point, because not every community is getting hit with this the same. If you have a small community that's naturally socially distanced and you have good compliance regardless, you're probably having much better outcomes at this point. But the, the thing that Devils Lake and, and Ramsey County as a whole, for a point, has, I shouldn't say going against it, it's a positive thing. We're, we are, we are a health community, you know, a lot of people come in. Everybody from Nelson County, Benson County, and, and Towner County, when they have to do large shopping or things like that, they come into Devils Lake. And that's a good thing because it drives our community and we derive things from it. That's a fantastic thing.
Absolutely.
But you get more people mingling that wouldn't be mingling otherwise. So it's six of one, half dozen of the other, but at, at this point, I mean, the calls all over the city have been interesting and we're gonna have a call again today, I believe, at eleven o'clock, so, um, it's just been interesting to see how each community has been handling it. One of the other things, I forgot to ask Candy or Carrie about this previous to the meeting. Do all of our liquor licenses outside in the county, are they all on sale and off sale?
That I can't answer, who's all on or off.
Because one of the things that was brought up, the, in, like, Grand Ole, other cities have done it, but Dickinson specifically put it back in, was the ability to sell food if you only had an o- on-sale license. And then, I, I can't remember exactly how it worked, but essentially to allow for people to take a mixed drink in a vehicle or whatever off of that license. And I don't know the particulars of it, but I just thought that was an interesting approach so they could continue to allow businesses to, you know, sell curbside essentially, so that people don't have to sit in the building when they're, you know, wanna have a beverage, they can take it home with them. Yeah, and I think most of ours in the county are probably off and on together, so that's probably not an issue. But I just thought that was an interesting approach because some of these cities have a lot of restaurants that just have on-sale versions.
Right.
So they're allowing essentially, as long as it's a, a container, you can say, "Oh, I wanna get a Long Island iced tea," they'll put it in there and you can take it home with you. So that's helping that curbside and additional sales and things like that. Anything we can do to try to help keep our local businesses viable at this point is the most, keeping our kids in school are the two most important things. Because, I mean, you, you, you watch the, the curbs and they're, they're just, you're really reminiscent of na- nationwide, you up and dip, and up and dip, and on the third way up now, and, and it's, it's.
Well, let's put this in place and have Carrie put the wording in there, you know, policy change, whatever way you want to put it. But I don't think we should use mandate. I think a mandate ought to have a penalty. You know, because people, first thing they ask you, "Well, what's your penalty?" Uh, reasonable, yeah. And I'm using the words from Bismarck now.
And that's not unreasonable. I mean, uh, you know, what you call something does matter.
Yeah, we need everybody's cooperation, you know, go out and marshal all this, my God.
No, no, and, and that's not, yeah, and that's not the approach I want either. I want, I, I think the most important thing is that as leadership in the community from the county perspective is that we're saying, "We think this is important, we think it helps." I mean, we know it's not the silver bullet, but anything we can do to try to mitigate is a positive. Uh, and, and we don't wanna, I don't wanna come down on people. That's not how this has to work. It's just a matter of just reminding people and saying, "Hey, let's try to get this under control."
Hopefully, we're not too far from the vaccine.
Hopefully, that's, I mean, that's the thing. I mean, we're all kind of playing the long game, hoping that comes around sometime early next year or someplace in that time frame, I mean, and that's, that's what we're hoping for. Until then, we just have to try to keep it under control so we don't swamp our hospitals and we keep operating.
Lake County Board from the Ramsey County adopted a mask policy.
Second, uh, we have a motion in a second. What, what do we want to officially call it, wording in the doc? I like what Jeff was saying, a resolution in support of
mitigating.
Of, of mask usage for mitigation of COVID-19, something like that?
A, a policy of mask usage for mitigation of COVID.
Yeah.
Face coverage?
Yeah, face coverage, yeah, that's fine, yeah, because we, mask is a technical, it's kind of a little technical term, but, but they, they haven't laid out what you can use, which, I mean, it's, it's pretty much just saying, "Wear a mask, wear a bandana if you can't wear a mask." Just something to try to, yep, keep your breath control. Yeah, so we have a motion in a second and Carrie has been listening so she can make those changes accordingly. Once we get done with this, we'll, we'll put it out to the public. Um, when, when would we like it to be enacted? Because we do need a time, time frame for enactment as well.
About Monday, November ninth.
Start on Monday? Okay, that's fine. Make the motion second, that okay? Figure everybody's timing is useful. Um, okay, so we'll say Monday, November ninth, eight AM. It'll be an enactment of the policy if it passed. I think there's anything else we need in there. I think that's probably everything. Further discussion on the motion as it stands. Okay, here is none. Uh, we will vote, roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Nate.
Wakefield?
All right.
Brett?
All right.
Lightline?
All right, motion carries. Okay.
I have one question. Can you go over the ten-day quarantine? What was the ten-day quarantine about?
Uh, what I've been told from, so, in my situation, or in anybody's situation, when that person tests positive and they actually have it, then it's ten days of isolation, not quarantine, isolation from the start of symptoms to when you can come out of isolation. Uh, because those ten days are when you can, but, but, you know, the theory, the science behind it is that's when you can pass it off. So those ten days from the start of symptoms to then is when you have to isolate from everybody. So like in my house, everybody else, I had to sit in the bedroom by myself for six days between that and my office. But you isolate for those ten days, but then the quarantining, this is where it becomes an issue, is the latency of the virus is fourteen days. So if you were a close contact to somebody that tested positive, you have to quarantine fourteen days from your last close contact with that individual. And the close contact is defined as under six feet for more than fifteen minutes. So basically, anybody in your household is gonna have to quarantine for fourteen days from that last contact when you went into isolation. So for instance, I got, and I'm not gonna, I don't wanna hear it, but I, I've got, I talked about it. I, I got, my symptoms started the seventeenth, I tested positive the twenty-third, I was out of quarantine on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. My family is still quarantined. So Kelly hasn't been to work in two and a half weeks because of this. But they get out, they get to go back to school and work tomorrow, so they're super excited. But that's where the problem comes in, is if you get close contact, then you go to quarantine. Then you run into a close contact again, then you go to quarantine. And the importance of the mask usage and the social distancing is if we make sure we stay apart from each other, six feet, and we wear our mask, you're not in close contact at that point because you did what you're supposed to do. And all of a sudden, we can keep things operating. That's the goal.
And I think the governor has taken, put that in place is that, um, if both people are wearing a mask and one tests positive, the other does not have to, uh, quarantine for fourteen years. And I think the big, big reason they did that behind that was, uh, to keep kids in school. So if there's one, one child in school that all of a sudden tests positive, the whole classroom doesn't have to leave because, um, ideally, the all classes wearing their mask.
Yeah, and they're doing what they're, they have social distancing in all the classrooms and they're doing, I mean, our school systems have made, I mean, not just our school system, but especially that have made unbelievable attempts to make sure that we keep kids in school. And it's, that, I mean, it's nothing but, nothing but praise for trying to keep our kids in school, so. All we can do is try our best and hopefully we can start to see a downturn, but we had a nice week of weather, but winter is coming and we're all gonna be inside for the next six months or whatever the heck it's gonna be, so it's gonna be, if we don't work hard to push it down, it's not gonna be a lot of fun, so. All right, very good, thank you. Uh, on next to, back to Carrie again, do we have anything on the nuisance property issue?
Nope, I am still waiting for Tom Trainer to get back to me. Um, I will tell you that the health department did go out and check that area of concern with a hole and the hole was closed over. That's about all I know for that end.
Okay. Carrie, Candy was telling me we didn't finish the motion on the last motion we did. I thought we all voted and I said it passed.
What did you?
Yeah, I thought so. I might be losing my mind, it's quite possible.
How old were you when we voted?
Yeah.
I know we voted and we did roll call and it was, it was, it stopped.
Vote for that?
Yeah, the motion passed.
Okay. I'm sleeping, sorry. Sorry.
Candy told me she was checked out today and I told her, "That's okay, just as long as you can say no."
I'm on the stroke bus.
I was like, "You've been working like crazy for the last, a long time, so it's okay if you're, if you're a little still on this." Okay, uh, so nothing on the nuisance property issue, we'll keep that on unfinished business to go forward then. Okay, new business in our packets, uh, we have the state audit. So we need to approve the audit. Do we have it in our pack?
We got it.
We got it a long time ago, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, I read it a long time ago and it looked good, so. Okay, discussion on what we'd like to do with the audit. Or questions on the audit is probably a better, a better term.
All right, Candy, we're good?
We're good.
Need a motion? Motion to do it.
I like how everybody always jumps on the second. It's impressive.
We like to leave our name in the paper.
We have a motion in a second to approve the twenty-nineteenth bid out of a county for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote at the same time. Motion carries. Copy release. We got documents in our packets, book. Copyers, and then appeared.
I know what you want.
If I understood it right, it looked like the company we're going with now has a better bid, correct?
You got a zero bid.
No, he has it all in that. Yeah, I wish it was zero.
And then the bid on the one was based off of X amount of copies per month and the other one was based more off of the amount of copies we've been using, correct?
This is actual copies.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was looking at it, trying to make sure I had an understanding of what I was looking at. So the, the one from, they're from Jamestown, correct? And that's who we've been dealing with in that bid as well, okay.
Kevin, you, you got one out there too?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, and that's with him switching to color.
Ooh.
Yeah.
We've got three tiny ones, little ones, they're colors, we'll get two there, so.
I want you.
You'll get one. And we have, what, six copies, it said on the list, the different? Okay.
Go ahead, make a motion to approve the, uh, copy release from central business systems on Jamestown.
Yeah.
We have a motion to do it, sir.
We have a motion in a second to approve the, uh, copy release from central business systems. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
All right.
Those things aye. Motion carries. Very good. Visitors and delegations, anybody in the crowd wanna say anything, hear anything in court? Okay.
One more, one more thing I should mention is they are inspecting all of our bridges right now. Same outfit that did our diving got the bid for this region. So they're out there inspecting us now and they found one that we need to close. They found it yesterday, so we're closing it today. It's by Ned Schneider's. There isn't even a road to the north of it, it's a very seldom used, um, bridge, but we did have to close that today's morning.
What, how big a bridge is it?
It's a big, it's over twenty feet, one of those, so it has to be inspected now. And it was on the dock, it'd be taken out next summer, we're just trying to get the, it's down, the, what do you call this?
Stream crossing.
Stream crossing standards out now, so.
Okay, so we had a plan to get it taken care of, that, that was gonna be my question, is, I mean, will the farmers use it, get across, anything like that?
I don't think the farmers, I don't think anybody gets it. Maybe the deer hunters, I'd be about that.
What town's it today?
Uh, Cato, Cato. Harding. Yeah, Ned Schneider, do you know where the Schneider farm is?
I have an idea.
It's right out, it's right off the west side of County Three, probably eight miles north of my place.
Alden, Alden Forest.
Yeah, kind of next to Forest, I'm there.
Best of their little ways.
Okay, Paul, as long as we're here, it's good we have a, we're planning to replace it anyway, so. Candy, now, they don't need the bridge?
Good question. We'll probably talk about that, what's a water board, but I, I don't think, other than deer hunters, I don't think they ever get fused because it's completely farm over to the north and out. Big, high grass, broad, to the south.
Is it on a section line?
It is on a section.
That's where you might run into a problem, you know, if we don't reinsert something over the section line for passage and probably look at closing the section line in order to not have to put anything in it, just open it.
I, I think about.
Which might be an option.
Think about the future, then also if somebody else buys a line, they may wanna.
Dance around that section line. Yeah, yeah, it's always.
Put it, you can put it, of course. Oh, yeah, I, I have no problem, that's what I decided to do.
Okay, well, very good. Okay, reports on. Okay, reports on portfolios, we'll start with Mr. Wakefield.
Well, we've had anything.
Oh, sorry, did you have something off?
Did you have anything?
Oh, okay. Nothing to report?
Not a lot, no. Sort of, still carrying on.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
We had suicide at the jail. The state boys, Worler and Anderson were up and booked on Monday and everything was followed correctly. Bad deal. They were up. Checked it out on Monday. Everything we did was right, I guess. I haven't talked to Rob about it, but what I was told.
Yeah. And other than that? Motion's ready, so we're having that. It's here, I guess. Yeah, Mr. Olson?
I can actually add to it a little bit. I talked to Rob and I talked to, to Dan. Um, the state was very impressed with the way our people handled it there. They were ahead of the curve, so to speak, when they got there. I mean, they hit the ground, they were running, everything was in order, so we are 100% compliant. Other than a few little paper checks that, you know, needed to get done, we were spot on and I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of our people out there from coming from. As far down as we were to where we are today, I mean, they did, they did a good job and everything was done correctly, properly. Et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to add that. Um, portfolio, Sheriff's Department. Steve had been ordering all the stuff that, uh, we gave him the permission to order here a while back. Ever though, now everything else seems to be running along pretty good.
He's gonna be busy in December, how do I know?
Yeah, I think he's gonna be really busy.
That's the next thing.
Yeah.
Kind of, uh, from, from the jail perspective, you know, sometimes even if you do everything right, bad things can still happen, so, yeah, and I'll, I'll reiterate, I guess, like, I'll piggyback this too, but when we did the meeting out there, we went through the facility, I mean, it, it's, they've done a really nice job and it's, it's, you know, the upbringing we made of it worked well, but it's just, uh. Okay, Mr. Brown?
Uh, can Carrie one of those do some of the issues up in your office that you've been experiencing?
The issues?
So, uh, staffing, COVID, courts.
Oh, um, we're still working, we're doing two in-office, two telecommuting, and then we're alternating weeks, um, which is a good thing because we've had a lot of, um, various situations where there's been close contacts with not necessarily close contacts for the purposes of quarantine, but we've had a lot of close calls with various witnesses that come into the courtroom. Um, court's better, court system's actively better with the mask policy, um, the distance. There's cleaning items in the courtroom, so when we're done at the tables, we just clean up and then head out. Um, we had a lull in numbers while we were shut down over in March, case numbers, but I would report that we're pretty close to the normal again. Um, so things aren't quieting down out in my neck of the woods anyways, work wise. Other than that, I think things are going well. Steve has been really instrumental in allowing us to do the BPM telecommuting so that we can avoid shutting down and avoid any kind of lack of services from our end.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, extension we heard from Sarah. I know they've been busy up there and, and they're working great guns and try to fill slots for that extension roundup and getting, uh, that a dead out. Um, airport authority, uh, we continue to meet on a monthly basis, numbers continue to be down. Uh, about 40% every month for awardings. Uh, they are picked, they picked up, you know, from that April, May time period. We, uh, I think 17 one month and, um, and, but you know, uh, we really gotta, before the pandemic hit, we were really looking to to hit the next level of, uh, awardings and which is, would have been the bigger, uh, funding increase for the, uh, airport, but, you know, we're lucky to try to get back on track. We made a thing on passes, but, um, um, and Chamber have their annual meeting, uh, I think it was, was 23rd, 24th of October, they did that virtually. Uh, handed out the Chamber, their Chamber number of the year, uh, past gals, um, to, uh, new President Field, Rummy will be the President of the Chamber Executive Board. Um, they are, uh, always throw on a monkey wrench in a little bit of everything and, uh, you know, hopefully we can all get through unscathed and keep our economy operating as efficiently as possible.
Okay. Excuse me, from my perspective, Chris, you got anything you wanna say? Did they raise your address that you lost? Um, you crazy?
Up in Mountain Two for us.
Okay.
Chris, do the, find some money for, uh, safety jackets for our.
Yeah, I saw that, you showed me the rear of it, that's a good deal. You've got, you've got new, new safety jackets for the highway for, living in the highway. Um, uh, great. Um, from my perspective, uh, we're in Central Housing Authority. Unfortunately, our executive director resigned, uh, taking a new job. Uh, so we are in the process, uh, we, we named an interim director, uh, so we have continuity of workflow and, and, uh, but it's still working fine, uh, and we're going through the process to get the job description together and all that fun stuff, so we're gonna be, I'm sharing that committee now, so it's gonna be, you know, all kinds of fun trying to get somebody new hired, uh, so that's, that's, uh, gonna be something in the future we're gonna be working on. Um, social services, uh, I was able to sit in on a call with the state, um, going over our zone plan for approval. Um, everything looks like it's going fine zone plan wise. Uh, we, we, we approved a lot of different stuff at our last meeting, zone plan specific, when it came to, um, if for some reason the zone list is dissolved, who, where the vehicles would go, where the dollars would go, that kind of stuff. We got a lot of approval. Um, so the state's, we had to get all that done so we could get our client from the state, but it sounded like they were happy with the plan. Um, Candy's perspective, election's done, so it'll calm down a little bit, which is good. Uh, nothing else from there, I don't think. Before we're devil's lake, we canceled our last meeting, we'll meet again next week or a week after, I can't remember what. Uh, the only other thing I had too is just to, uh, mention everyone, I hope you see that, um, the state approved additional CARES Act dollars and paid for law enforcement costs. So we are being paid for law enforcement through the end of the year. So this is, this is just through October, correct? Yeah, through October.
Yeah.
So in addition to the, what, we have 250 something before, through October, it's an additional 169 and then it's probably gonna be 55 to 60,000 a month for November, December as well, so another 110. So I think it's gonna be probably five to 600,000 dollars when it's all done. Um, you know, so, uh, and I, I gave an interview to, uh, Eric on it and talked about it, you know, just reiterating that, you know, those dollars are gonna be really helpful when it comes to paying for the Sarah project. Uh, we can probably bank some of those dollars and, and, and save it when we have to levy next year for highway or something like that, so we can pass those savings on now that we're gonna have those dollars again, but they're gonna be helpful to pay for some of those projects that we weren't sure how we were gonna find money to do it, other than taking it all over the property tax, so I think it's gonna be a helpful thing. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else. That's all I have. Uh, any announcements? Day number? Deer hunters this Friday, there you go.
I'd like to just interject your comments, Adam, on, thank Candy and, uh, Adam or Nathan and, uh, Jackie and the rest of our workers, the extraordinary work that they did above and beyond for the election. Um,
Did very well.
They did very well, there's no complaints. Um, everything, uh, operated smoothly. Uh, they put in a lot of extra time on that, so, um, should be commended for that, thank you.
Above and beyond in a tough time.
Yeah.
And Candy's glad she's not in Pennsylvania or Arizona right now. Jesus. She probably sent her over there to hell. If she plans to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be worried about that.
Yeah. Just deliver it to my lawn chair. We'll be all right.
They probably still be voting. Gotta come in balance next to the, next to the pool.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Yeah, it's, the, the day went. I mean.
The voters were all really helpful.
Every, everyone, everyone complied, um, you know, we, we did have like a small supply of masks and when someone came in and didn't have one, they were, they were politely asked to, you know, they would just put one on and everybody used the hand sanitizer dispensers that we put, we went through like three, uh,
Containers?
Three containers for the day, but that's, that's okay. Um, yeah. The new, the new equipment, like that, it was kind of a slow start for everybody to get used to how everything went, but I'm I, I don't know, I was, I was so relaxed on Tuesday, it was just, I just felt weird because I'm usually just stressed out, but it, we were done by 8 o'clock.
Yeah. I think it's a thank you too to the community because everyone worked really well at making sure and we did a lot of early vote, which is positive, which means that, then that makes election day a little far sooner when you've already got 80% of the vote sitting on the tables at, at 7 a.m. in the morning, so that's always helpful too, that people avail themselves of the ability to do that.
And a big thank you to those people that, that last week before election when numbers just kept going and kept going and kept going and, and like, there is no way that vote by mail is gonna be able to get through 4,000, 4,000 ballots in a day, so I reached out to one person and she found me, we had, we, Kevin filled in because we were short with one person and he hung out for, for the day and.
That's done votes too, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the opportunity to come vote, but Matt didn't, like, block or it wasn't.
Yeah, because I think you guys were done by like 4:30.
Found the vote by mail side.
Yeah, well, well, one, I had three lines going and they were all doing the same thing, but we'd split the, split the alphabet up.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
That's like 4,000 ballots in like eight hours, that's really good.
It's.
Impressive. That's, that's opening and checking and doing everything, that's, that's good work.
And I think out of the, everything that we brought over, there's only four, yes, four ballots that I have to bring to canvassing for signatures, signatures and all that.
That is the one nice thing about, we've done vote by mail for so long that people are used to it, so we don't, our canvassing is usually really smooth because very seldom a, a ballot that somebody made a mistake on or came in late. I think when we canvassed in June, there was probably eight or something, I mean, it makes canvassing very simple and everybody is so used to the system, which.
And we caught a lot, even before election day, where we made contact with those people either by, if they put a phone number or, um, some of the early voting, like the people came in, they didn't sign their ballot, put it in the drop box, well, they didn't put a phone number, so we you know, went to Facebook and, you know, oh yeah, I remember, you know, sent them a message and, you know. They, they, everybody came back and signed, so that's.
Above and beyond, I tell you.
Yeah, it was crazy. Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, man.
Definitely went through the looks, it was.
That's good, it's good you have the technology and everything, they won two since it was their first election.
Oh, but I'm so impressed with those pool looks that it
Yeah.
I'm yeah.
Good deal. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Very good, we are adjourned. It's probably the fastest AMV we've ever had.